Thank you for your patience. It is now 5:05. And today, Tuesday, June 14th, 2016, at 5:10, I'm sorry, 5:06. I call to order... I call to order this special meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council, sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember McEckern.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. At this time, will you please stand? And we will have a moment of silence to honor the victims of the Orlando shooting. And then after that, we will have the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our Police Chief Sam Lucia. The first item on our agenda is the public hearing. Item number one is the adoption of the annual budget for the fiscal year 2016 to 2017. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I will ask our city clerk to read the recommendation. And after that, I will take testimony from the public.
Recommendation would be that the City Council and the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Numbers 16-023, LBT 16-002, SCLA 16-002, and VWD 16-002. That would be adopting the budgets for the City of Victorville, the Library Board of Trustees, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and the Victorville Water District.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. And is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone. So at this time, I close the public hearing. Is there...
Madam Mayor, I have several questions, if I could.
Go ahead.
In the budget we show for the wastewater treatment, make the estimated fund balance for July 1, 2016, about $10,900,000 in the hole. Is that... Estimated revenues of $5,241,000, expenditures of $3,390,000. But the estimated fund balance, June 32, 17, brackets are negative. Therefore, is it projected that this fund balance would be $10 million in the hole? Come on page six, on the fund balance summaries.
Yeah, I think most likely Pat Rosenberg will be the best one to answer that, our finance manager.
It's because of the loan between wastewater and water. And so we did the transfer to categorize the wastewater separately. So the loan of $30 million to build a wastewater, we separated out.
A loan of $30 million to build the plant from Water District funding?
Yes, that's correct.
I thought this was simply going to be turned over to the Water District, or that would become an asset of the Water District, erase the amount that was owed.
We have to separate it out, but then in the CAFRA, it's combined together as part of the Water District. So Councilmember Kennedy...
It is an asset of the Water District, but the funds are kept separate.
Right.
The wastewater fund from the Water Operations Fund.
But that doesn't mean that it's going to lose money then in the operations during this coming fiscal year?
No.
Okay. That was the clarification I was looking for. The other item that I'm requesting... I don't want a clarification. I'm going to request that it be voted on separately, which is the Street Lighting District Fund. I raised the issue before in regard to the Street Lighting District Fund. And the issue that I raise, I think, I'm not sure that can be an explanation. I'm not sure it's not more than just a difference of opinion. But when we had limited funds coming in for the city, the administration overhead was $8,000, $9,000. And now that it's citywide, and we have a lot of funds coming in, administration exceeds $280,000. However, nothing has changed. And I realize that there's an amount that can be charged for overhead administration. But we can't charge more than the actual expenses. And it's still owned by Edison. And all we get is a bill. We own no assets. I'm not sure why we have such extensive administrative charges. And I don't want to vote no on the whole budget. It's a wonderful budget. But I can't vote on that affirmative at this time until there's some explanation of whether it meets 218. I don't think it does.
Did to that, after the revenues were raised?
Well, of course there was. The reason I bring this up is because I cautioned the council, I cautioned the council the night we were having the meeting, that now we have all these additional funds coming in, watch what happens to administration overhead. And that's what happened. And I'm uncomfortable with that from a point of view. Are we in compliance with the intent of the legislature? I don't think we are.
Your request was simply to vote on that separately?
Yes.
We'll be happy to put together a memo to the council to discuss that issue.
Yes.
And explain those administrative charges.
Can we just remove it and not vote on that piece?
That would suffice.
That's an option.
Dr. Trennik, can we just remove that?
Yes, as long as the motion is clear that you want to approve the budget, because you're also handling the golf course separately. So as long as it's clear in your motion that it's going to be approved with the exception of the Street Lighting District financing.
Okay, so we will be approving the budget with the exception of the street lighting, which will be a separate item that will be brought forward at a later time?
Correct.
The last item that I have is that the whole city has changed in regard to the health coverage for the employees. And I know many of the employees are now going to be... Well, let me rephrase that. I don't know if it's current employees or retired employees are going to be paying for office calls in addition to the insurance that they have. They're going to be paying additional for the prescription drugs that they haven't been paying for before. And therefore, for all the retired employees, there's an additional cost that's facing all of us. It's not self-serving totally. For the current employees, I don't know if there's going to be co-pays. I heard there was. But I also want to point out that the City of Victorville pays the employee share of health insurance up to $750 a month. Mojave Desert AQMD pays $1,131 per employee per month. Town of Apple Valley pays $1,100 per month. Mojave Water Agency, $1,020 per month. Hesperia pays $785. It seems to me that in all fairness, to the changes in totally beyond the control of the city, of what's happened with health insurance and the cost and the additional out-of-money cost for the employees, that the least this council could do is to, for the City of Victorville, is increase the $750 a month per employee to $850 a month per employee. Last, the council consider that as a part of the budgetary process. That's the last comments that I had on this budget.
Mr. Mayor Protim, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't know that we have the ability on the fly to give you a cost estimate for that. Hearing what you're saying and understanding it, can I make perhaps a suggestion, a modification? I don't want to get in the middle of your deliberations. But because we've now switched over to the CalPERS Health, CalPERS Health is actually on a calendar year basis. So our rates will change come January 1st. Might I suggest to give us a little bit of time to process that cost and to look at it further for budget adjustments that would necessarily have to be made, that you, instead of asking for it to happen as of July 1st, that you direct us to make the necessary changes or attempt to make the necessary changes, bring it back in order to have a January 1st implementation to coincide with the CalPERS Health?
I think that's fair. I think it's just a... I do know there's additional costs that's going to be incurred by all the employees. And fairness, they didn't cause it. It's not based upon a use rate where because of the excessive use, the employees' rate went up. It's totally beyond our control. I always try to be fair in regard to the health coverage, which make sure that everyone, including their families, are covered. And for this to go up and the other agencies to recognize it and that's not, I think it deserves another look. So I think this is a commitment to go ahead with the contract effective July 1 through December. And then prior to the new contract, January 1, the staff can put together the information. And then the council will have another chance to look at this. And I appreciate that.
The only problem that I have with that is that, well, I don't disagree with your point of view on staff. The people who will pay for that increased benefit are the citizens of Victorville, most of whom don't have a health plan that even approaches anything like the plan that our employees have.
The only comment I was going to make is that I agree we should look at it and with the change as it comes, January 1, at that point. I'd like to see at that, prior to that, the council get enough information comparing our city to the other cities in the area, other towns, and what their fringe benefit is as to what they pay towards medical or any other benefit cost. And so that we can make a educated decision with respect to that. But I agree that we should at least look at it prior to the January 1 date.
I absolutely agree with all the comments that are being made. My apologies to the council for not raising this issue earlier when we were having the study sessions to the budget. But the information that I got was from another agency. I happened to sit on the Budget Committee of another agency, and we are considering the health insurance benefits and comparing them. And that's when I became aware that we are far below the norm. And so it wasn't that I wanted to give it to the council at the last minute and expect you to make a decision, but certainly recognize it and be open to gathering the data and then considering a more informed decision at later time. And I appreciate the council on this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, thank you. But as part of all of this, I think right sizing the city's benefits and salaries and everything that we've been looking at lately, I know that we have a lot of work to do on that. But one of the ones as well as part of this overall analysis is going back to work five days a week. So I understand about trying to be on par with the other agencies, other cities up in the desert. But I'd also like to work at, look again at working five days a week.
I agree that we need to...
So are we approving the budget, removing those two items at this time? The street lighting and healthcare?
I'll move approval, but removing the street lighting budget from our...
Yeah, the street lighting budget would just come out of Resolution Number 1623. So if the motion was to approve the 1, 2, 3, 4 resolutions under item number one, with the understanding that with respect to Resolution 16023, revenues and expenses with respect to the Street Lighting District will not be included.
That's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Just a question that Keith brought up. Andre, do we need to continue the public hearing for that? Or is it considered closed and we're okay to adopt that budget with the additional information when we bring it?
I think we're okay to close it, adopt the budget, and then that other item could be renoticed if we needed to renotice it.
Okay.
And then, Madam Mayor Garcia, we have item number two, which is a budget item as well. And with respect to this, we separate this out because it involves the golf course. And so we typically have Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Cox recuse themselves, just so nobody could allege any potential conflict because of their residences on the golf course.
Very well.
Not going to say that you disagree, Mr. Cox. You usually do.
By the way, compliments to staff and our contractor that we have out there, Sierra, Sierra Golf. Management of the course. Had a chance to play it in the last couple of weeks, and it's just in beautiful, great shape. Think they're doing a great job. And obviously, with that, I'd make the motion to approve the budget.
Mayor Garcia, the public hearing does need to be opened on this item.
My apologies.
Okay, we're on item number two. And this is the adoption of the annual budget for the Green Tree Golf Course for fiscal year 2016, 2017. And I open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Any additional comments by council members? No? I close the public hearing.
My motion still stands.
I second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Mr. Cox and Mr. Kennedy absent.
I'm glad to hear that the Green Tree looks much better. Since I don't play golf, I wouldn't have any idea. But thank you.
Well, and I don't play golf often enough, but when I do...
We are moving on to written communications. Item number one is discussion and possible action. Green Tree Boulevard Extension, project status, and the repurposing of certain federal transportation-related earmarks. Madam clerk, read the recommendation. And I do have some cards. Should I call the cards first or read the recommendation?
Whatever you prefer, Mayor Garcia.
Read the recommendation first, please.
Recommendation is that the City Council consider the project update regarding the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project and provide guidance or direction to staff in proceeding forward, and give direction regarding two federal earmarks, one for the La Mesa Road and Niskualee Road interchange with a remaining amount of $619,595.74. And the other designated for the High Desert Corridor with a remaining amount of $3,599,599.76 that can be repurposed for use on a different project.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. ...
Okay. And I asked the mayor for a little latitude on this. Obviously, I believe staff's going to make a presentation on this item. We do have several people that have wanted to speak. But there's some confusion as to my role as Sandbag President and getting a loan agreement approved by Sandbag to help fund this project. As many of you may or may not be aware, the City of Victorville, along with Town of Apple Valley and the County of San Bernardino, have been working for the last five years, traveling to Washington, D.C., including Mayor Garcia and myself this last year, the previous year, Councilmember Kennedy and myself, and previous years, myself and members of staff, to lobby and encourage our federal government, Department of Transportation, to award us a Tiger grant that would help fund this ultimate project. We have not been successful, although we're still in the mix this year. And with Congress and the President signing into law the FAST Act and Fastlane Grant Funding, we have another opportunity, not just at the Tiger grant, but also at the Fastlane funding. So Mayor Garcia, as well as our city manager Doug Robertson, were back earlier this spring, along with the Town of Apple Valley, to advocate for that. We don't know the outcome of that. I'd love to be optimistic, but let's just point out that we've been back there four or five years previously. It hasn't happened. If it does, it will be a gift from heaven. But at the same time, from my perspective and being president of Sandbag, it behooved me to look at other options that might be available to fund this project. This was not done under the cloak of darkness. This was not done behind closed doors. This was voted on unanimously by the Sandbag Board of Directors. That's 24 cities and five members of the Board of County San Bernardino Supervisors. So, and, oh, by the way, it's not our money. It's Sandbag's money that would fund this. I think it's important to point that out before staff gives their presentation, because I don't want this loan to somehow convolute the agenda item. City of Victorville has been marching forward on building this project and its current alignment for 20-plus years. I applaud former city manager Jim Cox, who was here and was a champion of it, not only as city manager during his tenure here, but when he was the town manager for the Town of Apple Valley. So this is not something new that just happened overnight and somehow I'm springing it on my council. There has been comments out there that somehow that that's what I was doing. The loan agreement was just another mechanism by which we could potentially fund this. That in essence, although the loan agreement's not on your agenda tonight, what staff is asking for is direction from this council to move in that direction so that we can ultimately fund it. If we're successful in securing Tiger grant funding, if we're successful in securing Fastlane grant funding, that will buy down this loan and hopefully remove the need for it altogether. But at the end of the day, my job as your representative of this council and this city, as well as representing Sandbag, was try to figure out a way to get this project funded minus those federal grant funds. And whether or not they come through, we still remains to be seen. But Mayor Garcia, I would like staff to at least provide their staff presentation. And I'm sure the council will have questions. And at that point, you know, after questions have been answered, I will comment on the other side.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, anyone?
One thing I'd like to clear up. Money from Washington is not manna from heaven. Washington is not heaven. And while this may be Sandbag money, Victorville's going to have to pay it back. So let's not lose track of that.
That was a question, if it's not our money, why do we have to pay it back?
Yeah. It is different, though. And I would like staff to explain the difference. Six months ago, a year ago, most of us thought to borrow money from DIF, from future, I'm sorry, from future Measure I, was going to impact our ability to maintain our streets. And none of us were positive about that. We want to maintain our streets, and we're not going to build that bridge if it's a trade-off on our streets. But now today, my understanding, which is not clear, and I'd like to get it clarified, that's not the same issue. This is not impacting our street maintenance funds. Can you help with that?
You got it. So my intent today was to try to sort of introduce all of the topics of this agenda item. It is a complicated item, and it is politically charged, as we all know. And then allow our city engineer to then sort of give the details. But let me give a little bit more, a little bit off the top of my head. So we argued amongst staff exactly how to present these issues, because it really is sort of three or four issues that could easily be completely separate from each other, because the road we were headed down, I originally thought. But then they all became interconnected to the point that it made better sense to present them all as one, because decisions made on one of these issues impacts the other two or three, depending on them. So let me sort of line out the different issues that are in your staff report. First of all, we do try to give at least some background and history. Next up is a study of alternative alignments, something that was discussed back in 2010 when we were applying for about a million-dollar grant from the Air District. And there was concerns from council members at the time. I don't recall exactly. I think Mr. McEckern was on the council then, but I don't recall exactly where he was with those concerns. But we made a promise as staff back then to study potential alternatives because of the potential negative impacts to Green Tree Boulevard. But at the time, it was simply too early, because we didn't know if the project was going to get built in five years, 10 years, 30 years, and what developments might occur in and around that area that would have an impact. So seeing this item, you know, being part of the lobbying effort in D.C., and learning of the loan that Mr. McEckern talked about through the Sandbag process, I asked staff to do that analysis, give some hard engineering work to it, to at least look at that potential. So that's sort of the first item that's presented for discussion purposes. The next item that's presented is the loan itself. And just to be clear, the loan document is not here to be voted on. Staff is seeking direction on that. I will say that it's probably 95% complete. It's a standard form document from Sandbag, which they don't like to change. We don't like to change our form documents. But as a result, it is a little bit light with respect to the La Mesa-Niskualee loan that already exists. We have about $6.5 million left to repay on that loan from development impact fees. Our development impact fees come in at just under $1 million a year to repay that loan. So the math is pretty easy. We're six or seven years away from repaying that completely. Those same development impact fees are the repayment for the other loan, should the council ultimately adopt that at a future meeting. So the agreement that staff is reviewing and the attorney has reviewed isn't real clear as to exactly what position each of those loans would be in. The current document says that this new loan, if it were approved, would be in, quote, "first position." We have some concerns with that. So there's issues related to that other loan that we need to iron out with Sandbag, either in that agreement or in some kind of a side letter type of agreement.
Does that mean in $1 million a year of DIF, it'll take about 18 years to pay back the Niskualee loan and this one?
Assuming development continues to occur at its current rate, which we all know that it's not likely to, it's likely to speed up at some point and slow down at some point over 18 years, but we don't know exactly when. But at the current rate, yes, yes, it would be approximately 18 years before both were repaid in full. So the big difference between our existing La Mesa-Niskualee loan and the loan that has already been approved by Sandbag is the money that's being borrowed. Victorville, when Mayor Cox was then the city manager, approved a loan of... And Sandbag, as part of that loan, withheld the maintenance money that we received from Measure I, about $4 million a year, until that loan was satisfied. $4 million a year, until that loan was satisfied. I don't recall the exact numbers, but that's the $6.5 million that's left to be paid. So we went almost three full years not receiving $4 million a year in maintenance money. That money is now coming in. That's why you see the Bear Valley Road project, and then later this year, you'll see La Mesa Project, and then eventually Amethyst as well, followed by Industrial and Seneca. So those are the monies that are important for those major infrastructure projects that was withheld. The difference with the loan that was approved by Sandbag and is being discussed is that the monies that will be borrowed would be from the major local highways fund. It's still local funds, but it's not our local maintenance money. 25% of Measure I in the desert is set aside for these major local highways funds. So it's effectively Sandbag-controlled dollars that we would be borrowing. Ultimately, as I've mentioned, development impact fees would have to repay that at some point. That's the loan, and that's the biggest difference, why I would not have advocated for it if we had to borrow our maintenance money, because our streets suffered. The other issue that is discussed in here a little bit, that we still need to have as either a contingency with the loan that has been proposed, or as a side agreement that is dependent on, or vice versa, is there is a memorandum of understanding between the city, the Town of Apple Valley, and the county. The Town of Apple Valley, rough numbers, owes the City of Victorville $4 million for the La Mesa-Nisqually interchange. Their portion, as prescribed by the voters in Measure I, was about $4 million. The county's portion was a little over $1 million. None of that has been paid for our interchange. Just as a bit of an editorial note, had it been paid, we'd only owe about $1 million and a half at this point to get that completely paid off. Times were different. There wasn't a lot of trust. So ultimately, they withheld those funds, which we agreed to, to put them onto this project, the Green Tree Extension Project. So what staff is circulating amongst those entities is an agreement that very clearly lines out those obligations. Right now, you know, we all have talked about it. It's in a memorandum of understanding, but it's not an actual contract. So we'd like to have that contract in place before we go borrowing money, should the council choose to do that, or at least have the borrowing contingent on that money coming in. We just need it. Town didn't trust the city back then. Perhaps we don't trust the town now. Perhaps it's just simply good business to make sure that everyone is clear about who's paying what and when. But that's the, sort of, the interim issue that we also need to get worked out as a result. But the final issue is really the one that we need some direction on tonight. We would like direction on whether or not to proceed with finalizing this loan and bringing it back to this council at some later date. But we need direction on the reprogramming of almost $4 million in grant funding that we obtained from Jerry Lewis back, I don't know, 19-something, I believe, perhaps early 2000s, but I think 1990-something or other, for the East-West Corridor. It's almost $4 million, and we have the ability to reprogram that money, because it was given to us. One of the projects that we could reprogram it for is the Green Tree Extension Project. There are two other projects that staff has researched that it could be used on. One is altering the ramps at Bear Valley Road to improve the lights there, or widening the two-lane section of Air Expressway. So we need some direction, because a decision needs to be made on that reprogramming. So those are kind of the four issues that all end up getting interrelated. Let Brian come up, unless there's any questions you want to try to get me to answer. I'm at about the extent of my...
Just a couple of quick ones. We have, according to staff report, we got a $6 million cash payment we need to make into this, in addition to the $12 million we're borrowing. Where does that $6 million come from?
So it's actually a little bit more than that, if I recall, without looking at it. Our portion that we would need to come up with sometime before construction starts is about $2 million. The other portion that's not paid by the two-thirds borrowed from Sandbag would come from Apple Valley and the county through that repayment. So that $4 million that Apple Valley owes us, and the 1.3 or so million that the county owes us for La Mesa-Nisqually, would go towards that upfront cost.
Excuse me, but they already owe the $4 million?
Yes.
So in essence, they're not giving us anything. They already owe that money to us.
That is correct. That is correct. There were some comments made by the Town Manager that he's apologized for, calling it a gift. It is clearly not a gift. He's made that very clear. It is obligated dollars to pay for.
Yeah, and just to be clear on that, that is done throughout the county, not just in our county, but specifically in San Bernardino County as a part of a NEXUS study. So interchanges throughout the county, where it benefits jurisdictions that are in proximity that get a benefit from that interchange, have to pay a proportional share. So what Apple Valley is obviously owed to Victorville on La Mesa-Nisqually was a result of the NEXUS study that Sandbag did. And I'd just like to reiterate, there's some thought process, or there's been comments made, that somehow the city has to pay back this loan. Well, technically, the monies flow through our coffers, but it's development that pays back this loan, not a dime of our general fund, not a dime of the Water District, not a dime of any entity that this council oversees. It is development that pays back that loan. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, because there's been some confusion as to somehow this is going to put a debt burden on the city, and that if, for whatever reason, let's just say development didn't occur tomorrow, the way that the agreement's written, it's based upon development occurring, and that's what pays it back.
Exactly, and that's some of the loose ends that we need to tie off before staff will be comfortable bringing the loan back. Because the loan, let's say it's a 10-year loan, understanding that it wouldn't go into effect immediately, it would go into effect upon construction, but we still will not have repaid La Mesa-Nisqually. So however many years are remaining to repay La Mesa-Nisqually occur before we can start to repay that loan, suddenly it's, you know, only got a term of six years left or so, six or seven years left. It's reasonable to expect that we won't have it repaid in that time. There is a provision in the existing loan document, in their form language, that says that we'll work together to negotiate an extension to that loan. But there's also a provision that says that if we're in default, as in we didn't pay, then they have unilateral authority to dock our maintenance money. So we need to get it cleaned up, simply because there's a reasonable expectation that it won't be repaid in time. I have no reason to believe that they would do that, but the way the document currently reads, they would have that ability if we're deemed in default. So because we know that we aren't going to repay it within 10 years, unless there's a huge development boom, we simply need to get those things cleared up, either in the document itself or in a side letter that acknowledges the La Mesa-Nisqually loan that is in first position to this other loan.
So just two other things I'd like to get clarification on, and I think the staff report covers it, but I'd just like it in more clear language than the way engineers write, no offense intended. I'd like to know exactly what major projects are out there on the board that will be delayed or just shelved in long-term while we're spending our development impact fees over the next 18 years to pay back this loan. The other one that I know is of great concern to at least some of the people in this area is how do we get some comfort that all that traffic from Apple Valley is not going to dump out on Green Tree Boulevard, where we have no ability to handle it? How do we make sure that that traffic gets diverted to Nisqually where it can best be handled?
And that's an excellent segue for me to kick this over to your traffic engineer, Brian Gingler, as he comes down to answer those two things. Oh, Mr. Cox?
We talked about major road projects money. What are those roads that qualify for major projects?
That is something determined by Sandbag and through the mountain-desert process, I believe.
First 395, the freeway I know are qualified, because they can do projects. But I also thought Bear Valley Road and major interconnects between cities qualified. Are we using any of that money, because we recently entered into a contract to widen the bridge over the track on Bear Valley Road? We're paying for all of that, that supposedly has tremendous benefit to Hisparia and Apple Valley. Are they paying any portion of that, widening?
You were talking about widening the Bear Valley Road Bridge over the railroad tracks.
Yes.
That is going to be funded with Highway Bridge Program Funds. Those are federal funds, separate from the Sandbag Major Local Highway Program. But you're right, almost all of that, project-wise, within the Victorville city limits, so the match funds will come from Victorville?
Victorville.
Yes.
On NEXUS study, to see if there was a benefit to other communities or entities. Nevertheless, they will owe...
Well, in the Sandbag NEXUS study, the arterial roads are the responsibility of the jurisdiction that they lie within, and it was only the interchanges that had shares, interagency shares.
For major road projects, do we have a plan that shows what those roads are, so that we can recognize them as major roads that would qualify for Measure I money?
Yeah, I think you're talking, just for terminology's sake, Mr. Cox, Major Local Highways Fund, which was specified in Measure I. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, we, you probably recall, quite a few years ago, the Victor Valley Cities and also the county worked together. We developed a priority list of projects that would be eligible for the Major Local Highway Program Funds. So that's the Sandbag Measure I, the 25% pot that comes out of the Measure I. And so we collectively developed that list. We took it to Sandbag staff, they reviewed it, and we took it to our respective city councils, town councils, the county Board of Supervisors, and then ultimately to the Sandbag Board, and there was a priority list developed of eligible projects for each agency, and one of those was the La Mesa-Nisqually interchange. There were several projects on it. The problem is that our list, our needs list, was bigger than the amount of funding available, and everybody knew that. And we knew that as time went on, we were going to have to prioritize those projects, because we knew there wouldn't be enough funding for all of them. And so we have now completed the La Mesa-Nisqually interchange that used a pretty large share of Measure I. If we continue to put this Major Local Highway Program funding on other priority projects, eventually we will run out over the years. We won't be able to build everything on our priority list. At least, that's what the current analysis shows. So I don't have the list in front of me. I could, I could give you a few of the projects on there. One of them was modifying the Bear Valley Road interchange. The Eucalyptus interchange was on there, and some major projects like that. The Green Tree was also one of them.
I don't want to sidetrack this. This is a very important hearing. Do we intend to proceed with the Eucalyptus interchange?
It's not as high a priority as this, at this time, as the Green Tree Extension Project or the Bear Valley Road Modification Project. And the way those projects are prioritized is with the Sandbag 10-Year Delivery Plan, and they update it every two years.
Yeah, and just to clarify, and I'm sure, Jim, you may remember this, and forgive me, I'm forgetting my dates, but we had a joint council meeting right here in these chambers with the City of Hisparia to discuss modifying the Bear Valley Road interchange to the benefit of both the jurisdictions of Victorville and Hisparia. Victorville voted unanimously to support that redesign, and Hisparia voted 3-2 against it, which basically meant it never went anywhere. And so as much as I think we all want to see some redesign of Bear Valley, the dynamics with the City of Hisparia, in my opinion, still have not changed. So until we can get them on board to see the benefit of changing the design of that project, that, even though it's there as a priority, I still don't see it going forward.
At the risk of correcting council members, which I never like to do, my memory's a little bit different, Ryan, actually. I thought that Victorville voted against it because of the elimination of the left turn off the freeway onto Mariposa Road, and Hisparia actually, I thought, supported it. It was a strange vote. Ultimately, it didn't pass.
It was the other way around, but we can go back in there.
Either way, yeah. Either way, it didn't get full support from both councils.
Right, right.
The thing that's hard to argue on this point is that while this Green Tree Extension certainly is going to benefit folks in Apple Valley who want to get to the freeway, and it'll have some tangential benefit for Hisparia, because we'll relieve Bear Valley Road. The fact, too, is that the people that live in Victorville on that side of the freeway are going to get a tremendous benefit out of this, because it will relieve the traffic on Bear Valley Road. I mean, I think this is going to benefit everybody. I think it's hard to make a case, and it would be hard to make a case that the modification of the off-ramps and on-ramps at Bear Valley Road would be more valuable to the community than the relief we'll get off Bear Valley Road by completing this extension. I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
No, no, I would agree with you. I think we were just looking at, obviously, moving the ramps up onto the bridge further just to separate the traffic lights.
But if we're prioritizing, we wouldn't push that one.
Yeah.
Just to try to keep everything on track, Mayor Pro Tim Cox, your question about major local highways, I think we've answered. I just wanted to be clear that we're talking about borrowing those dollars, not spending those dollars, and those would have to be repaid by DIF, which has been explained very well. We still have two questions remaining from Councilmember Kennedy regarding what projects are we, if the council were to direct staff to move forward with the Green Tree Extension projects, what other projects are they leaving behind? What other projects could those future DIF monies be spent on instead of this project? And then also, once you get through that, we still need to answer Councilmember Kennedy's question about what that intersection would look like to discourage, you know, through traffic to go to Green Tree Boulevard. So I know we got those two queued up, and I don't want to get too far.
Is that pretty close to your question, Jim?
Yes, I want to, I want to point out that, as far as I know, every entity that's looked at this has agreed that it is a project that's needed. So many people, areas, jurisdictions that benefit. It's needed. What complicates it is the enormous amount of money and the inability to say, is that a direct benefit to the valley, or is that a direct benefit to the citizens? And we probably shouldn't go there, because we'll never answer it, because there is an indirect benefit to everyone. What complicates this is the movement several years ago from a lot of the residents at Green Tree that were adamant that not all of that traffic should come down Green Tree Boulevard. Secondly, at that time, there was a question about what happens when it hits 7th and Green Tree. Is that interchange designed in such a way to handle the additional traffic that's anticipated? My understanding was that it's not. And the council, way back when, and I don't know how many times, discussed that it would be in everyone's interest, when that bridge was built across the tracks, that it be diverted southerly to Hisparia Road to Nisqually. Nisqually is completed, it's widened, there is a brand-new interchange. It is designed to handle the traffic, and I don't know, I don't know what that involves in looking at that alignment again, but all the past councils never really agreed, as I recall, exactly where the traffic would go. I do remember a Measure I committee where a former supervisor made a motion to redirect, you know, put it directly into Green Tree, and it was approved, but it wasn't approved by the City Council of Victorville. Always the intent, as we got closer, as the city got closer to seeing the reality of this project built, that they were going to study that, they're going to engineering, we look at the design, what effect it would have, positive, negative, and could it be redirected, or should it be directed to Hisparia Road southerly to Nisqually? That study ever been completed?
Well, I'll answer that question first, and then I'll go back to the projects that could be deferred or would be deferred because of committing funds to this Green Tree project. So first, I'll answer the question about the traffic, potential effects of the traffic increase on Green Tree. There was a traffic study done with the environmental document for this project, and as you know, we have environmental document clearance, and the traffic study showed that there would be an increase in traffic on Green Tree. be an increase in traffic on Green Tree due to the project. It also showed that there would be traffic that would go to other routes, including Nesqually Road. Some of it would go there, and some of it would disperse to other roads throughout the city. One thing to keep in mind is that in our general plan condition in the far future, when we have a lot of growth that will have occurred in the city, that, you know, I hate to say this, but most of our interchanges will be in a congested condition, or a more congested condition today. That's just a result of development. And this, this project would add, would contribute to traffic. But having said that, you've probably heard this before from a former city engineer, traffic is a little bit like water, and it will, as congestion builds up in one location, it will adjust in other locations. People will try to find the shortest route, time route in point A to point B. To answer your question about the diversion of the traffic at the Green Tree-Hisparia Road intersection, yes, we did look at that. We didn't attach the exhibit to this report, but we actually had an exhibit that showed a plan where we could divert the traffic with a median, with only one through lane on Green Tree and a double left onto Hisparia Road. You could have any number of configurations that would encourage traffic to go south onto Hisparia Road to Nesqually Road, including how you time the signals. So yes, that could be done, and it could be done relatively inexpensively. So having, having said all this, to summarize, this project will put more traffic on Green Tree. It could be limited with certain controls, but that's what the studies show. Now, we have not done additional studies that study the traffic diversion with the alternatives presented in this report. We have, we have not done that. We could do that, we have a traffic model, but we have not done a formal traffic study studying these different alternative alignments. Now, to answer-
So we could do, we could do two lanes left onto Hisparia Road, one lane straight onto Green Tree. Can we do one lane to the right to, down to Seneca, La Paz, and Roy Rogers?
There would be-
For people who want to go north?
There would be one lane to the right, yes.
So two left, one in the middle, one going right?
And actually, to further that point, Brian and I had a discussion, because Hisparia is ultimately built out to have three lanes in both directions, you could technically have three turn lanes off of Green Tree-Hisparia Road, and then a lane that would merge until development occurs where you would have three lanes of traffic turning left, which everyone will go left instead of going straight.
I've heard a suggestion of a flyover, left-turn flyover that would eliminate any stops.
If you want to see an engineer roll his eyes, start talking about that, that would be me. That is always an option, it's a costly option, but there is a way, should there be such a huge amount of traffic, there is a way to essentially smooth out that track to where, if I'm coming from Apple Valley, going to the freeway, I don't even have to stop at Hisparia Road. Not saying it's-
Not in the plan.
Not in the plan, but if it's such an impact-
No promises.
-at Green Tree and Seventh, there are structures that are built in other cities that we could build, that you simply take both lanes with zero stops over Hisparia Road, have them then come into their own special lanes, and then eventually merge onto Hisparia Road.
On Nesqually Road.
Oh, onto Hisparia Road, and then if it's a problem at Nesqually, you can do, it's the same thing more cheaply because it wouldn't involve a flyover. But there are ways, if that becomes an expressway essentially, there are ways of letting that traffic get through so much more quickly that it encourages them to not drive down Green Tree unless their business is at the end of Green Tree Boulevard, which we still have a Costco there. We still have auto dealers there that we would love residents of Apple Valley to continue to shop at. So we don't want to shut it off completely if ultimately we still come to Green Tree Boulevard. We simply want to make it more convenient, if you're going to the freeway, that you go to Nesqually.
But if they, if they wanted to go to the freeway and went down Green Tree, they'd do it once, and they'd probably never do it again.
Perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, and that's usually the human behavior. Usually people will find the shortest route, timewise. That's true. I don't know if there are any more, are there any more questions regarding the traffic or the traffic diversion?
Well, I, you know, the question, and I think appropriately asked by Mayor Protem Cox, is as to the Palmdale Road Intersection. This question's been brought up every year and every time we've discussed this since I've been on the council and probably for decades before that. But Brian, Doug, my recollection in our discussions, Palmdale Road Intersection is not the responsibility of the City of Victorville, where Bear Valley had, had been, we, the Rogers had been Mohave. The Palmdale Intersection, or Palmdale Interchange is completely under the jurisdiction 100% of Caltrans.
That's correct. It's a state highway to a freeway, both of which are Caltrans facilities. Green Tree and Seventh is ours. But Brian, do you recall when that, those intersections were last upgraded? Because if I, if I remember right, several years back, those were upgraded in anticipation, or at least to their build-out, in anticipation of someday this traffic coming through there. I think we were all a little disappointed when we saw how little it helped, but I know there was changes made.
The Green Tree Seventh realignment was a little before my time. I think it was somewhere around 2000, the year 2000, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But to answer your question, yes, the Palmdale I-15 Interchange is 100% Caltrans's jurisdiction. It's their responsibility for maintenance or improvements. I had a discussion last week with Sayad Raza, he's the deputy over project and program management, and I brought up that question. I said, if we construct the Green Tree Extension Project, and there are additional traffic impacts on the Palmdale Interchange, could Caltrans hold the, City of Victorville for any financial responsibility to make improvements to the interchange? And his answer said, no, because you've already done your environmental document, you circulated it to us, you've already identified your mitigation measures, we already had an opportunity to comment at that time, and we would have no ability to exact monies out of you to make improvements.
Put that in writing to you.
I don't have it in writing.
Let's get in writing.
Just for clarification, I have always understood that the freeway interchange and to the, to the limits of the interchange on West Side, East Side is 100% Caltrans. But I've also been under the impression that the interchange of Green Tree and Seventh Street is 100% Victorville.
That's correct. The intersection at Green Tree and Seventh is 100% the city.
Intersection.
Intersection, yes.
That, yeah, four-way, six-way stop, whatever it is, that's all?
Yes, it is. Are there any more questions about the traffic?
Well, I know we're going to get to it, and part of the agenda item is the repurposing of the, I would just, you know, we're looking at repurposing earmarks, but could you give a summary of the earmarks? I know it's in the agenda item, but I just, to refresh all of our memories, earmark money that has been spent, that if, for whatever reason, we decided not to go down this road, would have to be paid back. And then also, from my perspective, I know there's options in front of us, but I believe they all involve taking of property from the perspective of actual residences. I, I'd like to get that thing off the table right now.
Okay.
Because there's no way in the world that I'm going to vote to take people's homes. So I doubt this coun, anybody on this council would vote in that direction. We never have, and I doubt we ever will. But any other options, it's my understanding, would actually take people's homes.
Okay. Well, before I get to that, I would like to get back to the, answering the question on what projects would be deferred or delayed if we commit DIF funds to this project, the Green Tree Extension. And basically, our developer impact fee list for roads is a very extensive list. Most of the projects are arterial projects. Now, normally, those are constructed by developers, and they can get a credit, a fee credit for those projects. But the ones, the projects that are sponsored by the city are the kind of projects that would be an interchange or a major project like this, like the Green Tree Extension. So it's those kind of projects that would be delayed. I already mentioned the Bear Valley Road Modification, the Eucalyptus Interchange. I would say those are, those are the major ones that would be delayed. Widening National Trails Highway, that's already largely developed along that stretch. It's unlikely-
So Brian, taking, taking La Mesa out to 395 would be a developer-driven kind of project? Or the widening of Mohave out towards 395?
Typically, that would be done by developers. Now, the La Mesa connection at 395, that's a city-sponsored project, that one. But it's, it's those major projects, like Green Tree, a new interchange, modifying the interchange, those are the ones that would be delayed. To get back to the earmarks, do you want me to address the alignment first, or the earmark question?
Well, the, well, the alignment, because that feeds into the earmark.
Okay.
Earmarks are specifically for what we have currently under design, is my understanding.
Okay. Well, you may recall, back in 2010, there were questions raised about the current alignment, the one that was in the environmental document, the one we've been designing. And so, city council asked staff to look at alternative alignments. And so, we did that at that time in 2010, and there was a presentation given on that. Since that time, there hasn't been further study done until recently, because there were still some questions about those alternative alignments. In the last few months, we've spent a lot more time taking a look at those, and the alternative alignments would be, one would be basically curving Green Tree to the south and connecting a quarter mile south of the existing Green Tree intersection. The other alternative would be crossing the railroad at Ottawa, and then the third one would be crossing the railroad at Nesqually.
From Ridgecrest.
From Ridgecrest. Ottawa would cross between Ridgecrest and Hisparia. Nesqually also would cross between Ridgecrest and Hisparia Road. We took a real good look at those, spent a fair amount of time actually developing some preliminary plans and profiles. We looked at the bridge going over the railroad tracks, and actually did a design to determine how long would the bridge be, where would the road go, how could we actually construct this to meet our standards? And we did that. And from that, we determined, okay, how much right-of-way would we need, how many parcels would be affected, how many existing homes would be affected, et cetera. And from that, we developed some, some rough cost estimates. They're not detailed cost estimates, they're more comparative to the current project. And that's how we came up with taking a look at those alternatives. So there are, I guess you could say, advantages and disadvantages of each, each one, and you can do anything with enough time and money, but the, the basic summary is that if you were to go with another alternative, it's going to delay the current alternative, it's going to take more time, and it would also cost more money. And for two of the alternatives, Ottawa and Nesqually, you would have to remove some existing single-family homes to construct those roads.
Well, it's not just that they take the homes. You've got people who have bought a home in a neighborhood, and now we're going to put a major thoroughfare right through the middle of their neighborhood. So it's not just the ones we take, it's all the ones that are impacted by that, because I'm sure they never bought into that with the idea that, you know, a huge street was going to run right by their house.
Those routes are not in our-
Those really do bother me. Plus, you delay something three or four years, what's it going to cost? What are the construction costs going to do?
And we know construction costs are on the rise, and just to be clear, we aren't advocating for those other alignments. It was something that we were asked to study, and, you know, we, so we've done that, but it's not recommended that we would do that. We, rest staff recognizes that, you know, the potential seizure of single-family homes is unpalatable to the council, it always has been, but that, that's what it would take in order to use those other alignments.
Yeah, if we can direct traffic with lanes configurations, that's better than-
It would also be the most economical solution, and it wouldn't cause a delay in the project.
And Brian, doesn't that feed into the earmark question?
It does. If, I don't know if you want any more discussion on the alignments. If not, I can move into the earmark part of it. A federal earmark is a type of fund that has to be sponsored by a congressman typically, and it's for a specific project or program. In this case, there were a number of federal earmarks received, where the city was the recipient. Some were on the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange, most of them were on the Hightower Corridor. Almost all of them were sponsored by Congressman Lewis. There was one that was sponsored by Congressman McKeon. And in this case, there are two earmarks that have not been used. FHWA recently changed their rules, and they're allowing the reuse or the repurposing of these earmarks. They can be designated for other projects for reuse.
Brian, let me, Brian, let me stop you. Before we get into the repurposed ones that we're going to discuss, I think Councilmember McCracken wanted to know, or wanted to explain the approximately 1.8 million in earmarks that have been spent-
Oh, I see.
...already that would impact the cost of those-
I'm concerned about-
Of those other alignments.
Those monies that have been spent, that if we abandoned the current alignment, the current project that we're designing, we're at risk of having to pay that back to the federal government, are we not?
Yes, we are.
It's about a million eight, and based on all the nodding heads that I saw, I don't think we're really seriously going to consider any other alignment, but, you know, 1.8 million dollars spent to date would need to be repaid because it was for the alignment that's-
Almost the 2 million that we have to come up with is part of the payment on the loan.
That's correct. That's correct. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that-
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay.
So, okay, Brian, go ahead and go back to the, the repurposing.
So the, the issue that we want direction on here regarding the earmarks is there are, there are two unused earmarks. There was one on La Mesa-Nesqually that we had authorized for right-of-way. We weren't able to fully utilize all of that earmark on our right-of-way expenditures, and so some of it's left over, about $620,000. It could be reused on another project. There's another one that has never been authorized, it's never been used, that was just remaining, it was just sitting there, so to speak, on the Hightower Corridor project, and that's the one for about $3.6 million. And it also could be designated on a specific project for use, but they have to be authorized for use by the end of September 2019. And if an earmark is to be authorized for construction, that means you have to have your plans and specifications and estimates completed, have to be certified. If there's right-of-way, you have to have the right-of-way acquired and certified, and basically you have to have a shovel-ready project, all your permits, and that, those type of things. So the, these earmarks could be designated on the Green Tree Extension Project for construction, but we'd have to meet those milestones. We'd have to complete the PSNE, we'd have to certify the right-of-way, we'd have to have all of our permits ready to go for construction before, well before September 30th. We'd probably have to have those ready at least three months before to get authorized in time. So there are other possible projects you could use it on. There was a discussion about the merits of each one. The Bear Valley Road I-15 Interchange would be one of them. However, it's very doubtful that we can meet that timeframe because there hasn't been an environmental clearance, there hasn't been a, a design, there are no right-of-way requirements on that one, but it's very doubtful that we can meet the timeframe on that. The other possible project would be widening National Trails Highway. That's quite an expensive project. These earmarks would only pay for a portion of it, and we really don't have the funding. We don't have the wherewithal to, to fund the entire project right now. That project does have an environmental document that was prepared. It was essentially complete but never reached environmental clearance, and then the plans for that went up to the 90% level, so they were almost done. But we had not acquired right-of-way. There were a number of parcels, we really need easements on that. It would be possible to meet the timeframe on that, but frankly, we don't have the funding to fund the whole project. And we don't really have any other viable alternatives that I could identify to use these earmarks on.
Brian, I have a question. So if we were able to repurpose these funds for Green Tree, is it feasible to get everything done before September 30th?
Well- Well, the short answer is, I don't know. And the reason is, I'm confident we could get the design done. The design has almost reached the 95% milestone, and that's a schedule we could control. The reason I say I don't know is, it's the right-of-way. And we could acquire the right-of-way and have it certified in that timeframe. But if we were to have complications with condemnation cases, sometimes that can be time-consuming. I see Andre nodding his head, and it can be difficult sometimes to get an order of immediate possession, because if you're in the condemnation process, you need to get that, and that comes through that process. And that would be the only reason I could see if we had to go into condemnation.
But you're talking 2019, is what you said?
2019, a little over... We would basically need to have our right-of-way secured within about three years.
Brian, I've got a question for you. Don't normally ask staff questions, but one of the things I wanted to discuss with the council with regard to these repurposing is typically when a project is awarded federal funding, that federal funding is used to buy down the total project cost. So, we would get roughly 50% benefit from any federal funding we got on the Green Tree Extension. 50% would then go to Sandbag for the public share. Because of a Sandbag policy, the repurposed monies would go 100% towards the public share, not towards the share that we're talking about trying to come up with funding for. I have a little bit of an issue with that, because those were funds that were awarded to the city of Victorville, that we would then put towards Green Tree and see no benefit to the share that we have to come up with. So, what I was going to suggest to the council, and Brian, I'd like your opinion on this on the fly, I know. What I was going to suggest is that if Sandbag were willing to change that policy for this project or for all projects, and allow us to buy down the total cost so that everyone benefits, that you repurpose those monies onto the Green Tree Extension, assuming it's going to move forward. But if not, that we instead repurpose it to National Trails Highway or Air Expressway, however we're terming that. What... Is there a portion of the project, Brian, that you think you could spend those federal dollars on, on National Trails or Expressway somewhere there in time? Or would that be a futile effort?
That's a good question. That would be possible, because there are sections of the road that are, they don't have some of the right-of-way requirements that the other part does. And so, you might be able to widen part of it. And that's a possibility.
Okay. So, regarding that repurposing, the fourth item that we talked about, my recommendation, a little bit on the fly, would be that you indicate that you'd be willing to repurpose those dollars, as the city, it's your decision, towards Green Tree Extension if Sandbag will allow that to buy down the total cost of the project rather than only the public share. And that if that can't occur, then we would spend those or repurpose those dollars onto National Trails or some project to improve the freeway access to SCLA, which was the original intent of those earmarks.
Right. That's a reasonable...
Those were, yeah, I agree. Brian, could you stick by? I just want to do two things here. Supervisor Lovinggood's here, and I know he wanted to speak on behalf of the project.
Brian, can I ask one more question? Because I want to make sure I either heard it right or didn't hear it right. Are you saying that we have three years to complete the right-of-ways on this project?
Well, if we need right-of-way on any project, and if we want to utilize these earmark funds, we would have to have the right-of-way certified well before September 30th, 2019.
Okay. I guess my question is, do we have right-of-ways on issues on this project that will cause us to delay a year, two, three years down the road?
Yes, that's possible, because we have not started the right-of-way acquisition yet. We're just ready to prepare the appraisals. The right-of-way engineering is done, and we're just getting ready to...
We're nowhere near letting a contract, even if we approved it a month from now.
No. No, we're not. No, this isn't something that's going to start construction.
Right, yeah. But I think we always estimated that would take two years at a minimum anyway. But Andre, perhaps you can answer the question as to write a possession so that we can move forward while we're still working through that process. The courts awarded that to us on La Mesa-Nisqually, so we could build.
Typically, you can get orders for possession. Again, it's going to be a question of who owns the properties, how aggressive they are. But typically, you are able to get orders for possession. Then, you just have to deal with evaluation issues down the road.
Right. And we have much, much less property owners in this case than we do in La Mesa-Nisqually.
Right. You know, on its face, it should be doable, I would think. But again, I haven't looked at the property ownerships yet. And again, it's depending on who they're represented by and how that process goes.
As I was saying, just in light of his time, I know Supervisor Lovinggood's here. I want to give him the opportunity to speak if you're feeling...
All right. And I'll be completely optimistic on right-of-way. But for those who had to deal with the right-of-way issue, you know, we know, the attorney knows for a fact, there's always one or more who felt they just won the lotto. And that government is not going to be the meanies and go into court with imminent domain, that horrible word, and take that property away and hold this city up. On every major project, we have encountered those people. It will occur here. So, unfortunately, that's the reality. And for those people who didn't believe it, go back and look at the record of Nisqually. You'd be amazed what happened to people when you dangled money in front of them. They hired attorney firms, accounting firms, and started counting the millions and didn't care how much it hurt the public or how long it held up the project. We're looking at what they were going to get. That's horrible, but it's a reality, and it's going to happen here. We just don't know who yet.
Stand by, Brian. We may have more questions.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lovinggood?
Garcia, good mor... I would say, "Good morning." It seems like morning. It started about 5:00, so... Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and executive, thanks for allowing me to speak. Mr. McCracken and I have spent a great deal of time looking and discussing this issue with Sandbag and seeing the importance. Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McCracken and I had the opportunity today to walk the road, and let me tell you, it's a nice road. It's a beautiful bridge. What I hope that you can find in collaboration is that we can move this project forward. I know it's going to take a big collective effort, and I know we can see positives. I can certainly see positives for the cities. I can see positives for the whole community. I think the East-West Connector, just as we realized with Nisqually. And when Nisqually opened, I can share with you, it became a lifeline of efficiency. I like to tease Mr. Robinson about my increased wife's shopping trips to your mall, because it was easier to get to. And I say the same thing. There will be more trips to Costco. There'll be more easier access. You'll free up the congestion on Bear Valley, which will be, as I like the analogy, as water flows, because traffic will find its way there. But it'll be a benefit to that and to D Street. And we also know that the companies that work here and that are going to continue to grow will find that as a cost-efficient advantages to their markets and their profitability, which I think is key for all our communities. So, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come and speak. And I do see this as a collaborative effort, any way we can help. One comment I do have is, it was nice to hear about Palmdale Road, that no one mentioned the county owned any part of it. So, that was a very positive thing to hear. But as being your county representative, I am here to work with you in all ways that we can to streamline this event and help in any way. Just call and ask, and I'll answer and come out. So, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Supervisor Lovinggood. We appreciate that you made time to be here with us.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
If you want to come and yell at Caltrans over the Palmdale Road closure, that meeting's tomorrow night here at City Hall, but it's a Caltrans project.
Well, I'll tell you, we've got a good relationship. And if we can help with that, Caltrans, believe me, that's, we'll certainly step forward.
As do we.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, I know you've got a lot of people that want to speak there, and I think I want to help facilitate that. But I just, a couple of quick questions from public safety. I mean, obviously, Sam, in your capacity as our captain and responding to calls, amount of time it takes to get the calls. I know Dan couldn't be here, but we've got our other Dan back there. Can public safety kind of allude to the benefit of these projects and what it does with respect to responding to calls? I mean, obviously, La Mesa-Nisqually was a huge benefit. I'm sure, I would imagine this would be as well.
Absolutely. I think you all know what I'm going to say, and that is, we spend an inordinate amount of time responding to calls, and especially depending on what shift we're working. It varies. But you all know that when you're having an emergency, and I don't know if any of the people in the audience have experienced this, but it seems like forever for help to get there. And it could be, it could be within minutes. But anything that relieves pressure off of Bear Valley or off of D Street is a positive for us. And speaking strictly from a public safety standpoint, response times are critical. And if we can get there faster, we can help more, and we can do more.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start calling out. I have several cards here, and the first one will be Cecil Volk.
Hi. Thank you, council, for hearing us. My name's Cecil Volk. I'm resident of Apple Valley. And where I won't be directly affected by this, I will be, because for many, many years since I moved here, that's been on the topic of conversation. And I'm sure that, I know most of the council members in the town of Apple Valley, and we'll see if we can't get you paid for the rest of your deal for the... But really, this is affecting everything in the whole valley. And it's a very important project to complete. We've got this beautiful bridge that you guys just had a chance to go look at, and it doesn't go anywhere. You can't even use it. I think the, at some point, there's not going to be ever a perfect plan, but at some point, you know, we have to move forward and not, and development will come. This is a big project that'll help all the retailers on both sides of the bridge. And some of the projects that you talked about, about Bear Valley, those projects are going to be, I think, mitigated somewhat by the fact that you're going to take a lot of volume off of Bear Valley Road, which is what we've all been trying to do for a long time. So, I encourage you. I'm a real estate broker, and selling houses is, traffic is very, very important to continued growth for both real estate and for commercial in this area. So, I appreciate your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Redchild?
Thank you. I just want you to know, you're interrupting my 5:00 wine and news to be here, but I'm going to be here. With respect to the finances, Sandbag and Mr. McCracken and Mr. Lovinggood, you've got them in good hands. They know how to get through the minutia and juggle the balls and get the finances shifted around. What I'm interested in is the council take a policy decision on the design, engineering features at the end game here. There's more than one option. To me, I'd rather see the connection point off of Ridgeway, Ridgecrest come over more than just Green Tree, one of the other options, if that's possible. If that's not, and you have to hook into Green Tree, then it's extremely important how you design that and everything else. If you want a 10-second straight ahead and everything else, and they have to wait another two minutes, three cars get through, because we're not having you go down there. If you want to go to the freeway, go down Nisqually. That's super improved now. It's ready, waiting for everything to happen. So, we're good to go. That's not a small issue. That design feature's in there, and I've mentioned to some of you on the council and the engineering staff and everything else. But if we deal with that, I think everybody will be happy. We get all those folks running over to Hesperia Road, and Victorville will be happy. That's the only thing that'll make Victorville happy. Otherwise, you put, if it's a study, you showed 20,000 cars a day increase there. I don't know if that number's accurate, but if that's anywhere near that amount, a number of those folks want to come down Green Tree. They want to find Old Town. They want to find coming through Yates. Someplace they want to go other than Nisqually. We don't want them even thinking that. We want them thinking getting over on the freeway and then go whichever direction you want from there. And so, that's my only pitch to the council, is make a policy decision, if it's still open, to make sure that we get that traffic there. And if part of the option is to make a new intersection, not Green Tree, yes, you give up some of your grants that you've already got lined up, but you can be trading those around. That's Sandbag's job, not me to stand here and figure those out. But the engineering is there. The engineering connections for Ridgecrest to Hesperia Road are there. There's other options. The worst option is Green Tree. But if you're going to have Green Tree, then three or five-second straight through, and everybody else can go and wait another turn, that would be another option available to that. So, that's my only pitch there. I'm excited about the project. I know Ryan's put a lot of time into this, and especially the bridge. My wife and I use Nisqually interchange every day, so I'm pleased to use that. I want to use it up before anybody else gets a chance to. It's a great interchange, and it's waiting for that extra traffic right now, believe me. But Lovinggood and McCracken, I'll take care of the finances through Sandbag. Everything else is in your hands as to how you finish the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Serena White.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Serena White, and I'm the president of the High Desert Association of Realtors. I am not a resident of Victorville. I'm here to speak in support of the Green Tree Loan Extension Agreement being discussed this evening. The vision for this project has been shared with and anticipated by the community since 1984, when it first included the Victorville General Plan Circulation Map. The project has moved slowly forward through the years to the point where we are here today. By adopting this loan extension agreement, you are allowing this 32-year-old project to finally reach completion. By voting to accept the loan agreement, you are voting to make the lives of the citizens of Victorville safer, support their property value, and encourage new business, which will bring much-needed job opportunities to the city. As a Realtor, I support the policy adopted by the National Association of Realtors in 2008, that the timely provision of safe, convenient, and efficient transportation infrastructure enhances the quality of the community, supports property values, and mitigates the effects of traffic congestion that accompanies growth. Realtors support improving mobility in communities so that all citizens have access to transportation means best suited for their needs. It is my belief that you have an opportunity tonight to support a vital transportation corridor in Victorville through the use of these loan funds. This is an opportunity that the City Council should not pass up. By agreeing to the Green Tree Loan Extension Agreement, you are agreeing to uphold a long-term commitment to the citizens of Victorville. Improve public safety as emergency personnel will now have viable new routes to respond across the region in a timely manner. Support property values. Encourage business development. Encourage the development of new homes. Mitigate traffic congestion. Facilitate the growth of commerce to continue the expansion...
You have 30 seconds left.
...area, okay, of the area as a hub for logistic and goods movement. This loan is being provided by Sandbag at very generous terms, which may not be offered again if this agreement is not approved. I ask that you please demonstrate true leadership tonight by voting in favor of funding this infrastructure project, a project that is vital to the public safety, supports property values, and encourages future commercial development and expanding opportunity for commerce. This project, which can be provided as a direct benefit to every citizen in this city. Please vote yes tonight to approve the Green Tree Loan Extension Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Karen Sanchez. And after Karen, I have Rebecca Tennyson.
Good evening, mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Karen Sanchez, and I am president-elect of the Board of Realtors. I come to you tonight and ask you to complete the bridge. One of my main concerns is public safety, and as... One of my main concerns is public safety and as, as the Mayor Pro Tem brought up, this public, the insurance earlier in the meeting, you know, we can't always pick where we want to go when we go to the hospital. A lot of times Bear Valley is impacted and, you know, when my loved ones have to go back and forth to the hospital, I want to get them there as quickly as possible. So, I would encourage you to complete this project mainly from a public safety point of view. Councilman Kennedy, I promise to use Nusqually every chance I get. Thank you very much.
After Rebecca, I have Janice Moore.
Good evening. Again, my name is Rebecca Tennyson. I represent the 21st Senate District, and I do have a letter of support for, from Senator Runner. After hearing comments tonight from the council, I do realize this could be putting the cart before the horse, but I would like to proceed and read it, if that pleases the council. The letter is addressed to the Honorable Mayor Gloria Garcia and members of the Victorville City Council, and it is regarding the Green Tree Extension Loan Agreement. On behalf of the California 21st Senate District, I am pleased to submit this letter of support for the Green Tree Extension Loan Agreement being offered to the city of Victorville by San Bernardino Associated Governments. It is my understanding that this funding is necessary to complete this innovative project. I further comprehend that the corridor will improve traffic flow by providing greater efficiency of goods to and from Interstate 15 and US Highway 395. Currently, there are only two safe crossings over this busy rail line that carries more than 90 trains per day through Victorville. This is notably one of the most trafficked rail lines in the western United States. Victor Valley business leaders and community residents have advocated for this important transportation corridor for decades. Upon completion, the new corridor will incentivize the opportunity for growth and development through the Victor Valley and beyond. Additionally, ease of transportation for commuters will be realized, as well as creating access to local business and services. The Green Tree Extension Project will indisputably help facilitate the projected population increase for years to come. I wholeheartedly support the long-needed transportation improvement and strongly urge your support for the Green Tree Extension Loan Agreement. Thank you for your consideration of this project.
After Janice, I have Dakota Higgins.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Janice Moore and I'm with the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am the president and CEO, and I am so excited to tell you that today at our board meeting, we discussed this at length and very excitedly support the options of financing with Sandbag and the city of Victorville. This is an awesome collaborative move on behalf of all of our communities in our region, economic growth, safety. This is a time for us, I almost call it living history. How often do we get an opportunity to make such an imprint in our community? So, please, support the agreement and let's get the bridge built. Thank you.
Thank you. Dakota Higgins, and after her, or him, sorry about that, Carrie Leon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dakota Higgins. I'm here representing Congressman Paul Cook. Congressman Cook wanted me to pass along his support for this project. I'm sure everyone on the council and most of the people in the audience are aware that Congressman Cook, since he first took office roughly four years ago, has been a huge proponent of the project. He's regularly supported funding for tiger grants and, you know, advocated on behalf of Victorville, Apple Valley, and the county for tiger grant funding. Unfortunately, we haven't been successful thus far, but he, he's going to continue to advocate on behalf of Victorville for that tiger grant funding. However, he did want me to express his support for this specific loan agreement as well. He understands how vital this loan is to the community and this project is to the community. We heard Captain Lucia talk about some of the, the public safety benefits. We've heard about some of the economic benefits, and I'm sure everyone, you know, who's fought traffic on Bear Valley understands the, the traffic congestion and how some of that will be alleviated by this project. So, Congressman Cook is in full support of the project, and as someone who has an office in Apple Valley in the town hall, I'm definitely in support of the project because it gets me out to 15 easier. So, thank you very much for your time and thank you for, for taking a look at this very important issue.
Thank you. After Carrie, I will have Alka Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. My name is Carrie Leon and I am here on behalf of also the Apple Valley Chamber, and I would like to say that we are in support and we are very excited about this opportunity that you have to secure this financial support again, which is not easy to get. The direct benefits to Victorville and the neighborhood communities is extremely important as with the infrastructure and is related to businesses, residents, visitors, people in the surrounding communities that come here to use your stores and businesses is a great opportunity. I encourage you to really consider this and I thank you in advance. And I encourage those who are concerned about growth and safety and businesses to support this. So, thank you very much. Also, I'm a Realtor in support. I'm a resident of Apple Valley, but I do come to Victorville all the time, so I'm in support there too. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah?
Your turn now.
Well, the first thing I'd like to remind all you people about is ISIS, okay? The head of Homeland Security was on television and he was saying, everybody's getting very complacent about ISIS. And they say, if it happens. He said, it's not if it happens, it's when it happens. He said ISIS is here in this country right now. They've arrested 98 of them right now, and they said, they're all over the place in the country. We don't know when they're gonna hit, we don't know what they're gonna do. They could come up with one or two people, they could come in with 50 people, but they can do a lot of damage and kill a lot of people like you saw last night in no time at all. Am I, am I being heard? I think it's very important.
You are being heard. I'm sorry, you're not speaking on the subject, and this is a hearing, but absolutely, you know, you can come and address us. I was just wondering if you had another card to address on the subject afterwards, but this is it, so, sorry, I had to ask the question for clarification.
Yeah, I just think it's very important, and if you just let it slide and forget about it, you're gonna get caught with your pants down. And you don't want to do that. You want to be ready for them if they're coming. And that's, we got the best police force up here in the high desert, we got the best captain, that's why you got the best police force. That's one of our benefits. And another thing is, I live on Green Tree Avenue. That thing is gonna, if I'm correct, that's gonna come in at the bottom of the hill of Green Tree, where it comes into Hisparia Road, right? Oh, there goes my, value of my house down the tubes. And are they gonna put something off so that the people can't drive up Green Tree to the freeway too, or they have to gonna go to Hisparia Road to Nusqually? They're gonna have to go to Hisparia Road to Nusqually, so they can't come up Green Tree. Well, that's a big help for us. I mean, we got enough traffic as it is everywhere you go around here, man. It seems like every day, there's more and more people up here. And if you're gonna pay the DIF fee with the Sandbag loan, you're gonna have to build a lot of houses up here. And that's what people build houses for, they wait for the DIF fee so they can do what they want. But then when you get all the houses built --
You have 30 seconds.
-- then you gotta spend a lot more money on everything else anyway, because you've got more people up here. And I don't know why you want more people up here. I don't know anybody up here that wants more people up here, no. There's way too many people here. Thank you, adios, and don't forget ISIS.
Thank you. That's the last card that I have. Now, we are just giving direction on this item.
Madam Mayor, if I might take a stab at this, I think what, what staff is looking for is direction and obviously that they would ultimately bring official documents back to the council for approval, assuming that the council were to move forward on this. So, what I'd like to do is make a motion to provide that direction for staff to bring back the Green Tree Loan Extension Agreement from Sandbag, along with the documents that would reimburse Victorville from the town of Apple Valley on La Mason Nusqually interchange, as well as the county of San Bernardino. Also, to repurpose the earmarks onto this project, assuming we can come to an agreement with Sandbag, where it would buy down not only the public share, but the development impact share, so it would buy it down equally, or per the percentage portment that's provided there. And that was, and then leaving the current alignment in place, but with the caveat that we do everything in our power through engineering and design to cause all traffic to flow onto Hisparia Road south to Nusqually. I think there's not a person on this dais that wants to see that traffic go forward onto Green Tree. I know that there might, it might be impossible to prevent all traffic going through, but Mr. Rothschild, our former mayor, made a comment about, let the green light be five seconds. I say let it be one. And maybe put a red light camera in there. I'm kidding. But, but making sure that when we, when we do the ultimate design there at that intersection, that if it's possible to do a longer light and more lanes turning left on Hisparia Road, that we do that. But that, that's the nature of the direction that I would like to give, and I would do that in a form of a motion.
I'd like to second that motion. I think a lot of people have looked at this for a long, long time. We have, we have a long way to go, but we're going to try, I hope, to obtain those funds that we desperately need from the federal government. We have the commitment from the congressman to keep, continue to work. He has worked with us very closely, and if we can satisfy these questions that have been raised, I think the motion has included all of those concerns, and I'd love to second that, and so we can move forward.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna attempt to add one thing and modify one thing. I'd like more than just the words, since this will be a public document that gets, that hits the agenda. I'd like to see an engineering drawing be a companion to this, that shows how we think realistically we can move that traffic through the intersection and minimize the flow to Green Tree. I, I think it would be foolish to try to stop it, but we can sure minimize it. The other thing is, as part of this, because I think the public has a right to know this, I'd like to have at least a list of the two or three projects we have identified that will be delayed while we're paying off this 18-year loan, so the public know. Would you all agree to have that part of the package?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think it's important that we all see that as well.
We can include that. We can easily include that in the staff report when we bring the loan back, just for clarity's sake.
Simple, straightforward, doesn't need a lot of explanation, just, these are the projects that'll be delayed. And a drawing, I'd like to see a drawing.
You can do drawings, right, Brian?
Already done.
Motion by Mr. McCracken, a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to public comments. Is it, I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone. Anything from council members?
I just wanted to mention one thing, Madam Mayor. Sorry for interrupting. I think Mr. Cotillo already got his public comment out, and that's probably a good thing. Just a reminder that tomorrow in Conference Room D, immediately across from here, is the public meeting regarding the closure of Palmdale Road coming up next Tuesday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It will be a full hard closure from the freeway all the way to Elavado Road. Several businesses are impacted. If you want to comment on that, or you know someone who may want to comment on that, or find out more information, it's tomorrow evening, 6:00 o'clock in Conference Room D. Caltrans will be there, you can come and get your pound of flesh from them, and we'll be there to watch.
Okay, at this time, I will ask for declaration of close session items by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have three items on close session this evening, two for the Airport Authority. The first is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property location is set forth on the agenda. The negotiating parties are Pacific Aerospace Resources Technology and Mr. Metzger on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item B is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And actually, B and C are the same item, one is on behalf of the City Council, one is on behalf of the Airport Authority. The case name is Comab LLC versus SCLA in the city of Victorville, and we don't have a docket number yet, but information is provided on the agenda with respect to where that case can be found. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session.
Just before we leave, one comment. Today is Flag Day, and for those of you who didn't spot it in the Daily Press, today is the day in 1954, I think, that President Eisenhower signed a legislation that put in the phrase "under God" into the Pledge of Allegiance. I thought that was really interesting. Good catch, Shay.
Who's asleep?
No other items to be brought before the council? We adjourn this meeting.
The closed session meeting of the Victorville City Council concluded at 7:34 PM, and there was no reportable action.